Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the City of Griffin Board of Commissioners, July 9, 2024, regular scheduled meeting. We'd like to open up tonight with a Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Brad Wright, followed with the invocation by Commissioner Trimbleton Tinsley III. Please join us.
Most questions have been answered. We're here today to ask for your blessings and guidance in the performance of our duties as elected officials. We pray for strength, love, knowledge, and understanding. Help us to recognize and solve the problems that are presented. Make our solutions fair and justice, best interest of everyone. Help us overcome our shortcomings and keep each nation as a team to work for betterment for the city and its people. We pray in your name. Amen.
Welcome, everybody. We're glad to have some new and old faces here. We'll start off by approval of the agenda as presented. Do we have a motion to approve? Commissioner Tinsley with a motion, Commissioner Ward with a second. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Five, zero. Under Presentations and Delegations, we're going to recognize the PCL Davis Accreditation Manager, Police Department, as the June 2024 strongest link in this chain. Award with thicket. Chief Hines Saps will address.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening.
Wonderful, thank you.
Good evening, everybody. We're happy to be here, and we're honored to be here to present Lakeisha Davis, the strongest link for June 2024. Earlier this year, in February 2024, Lakeisha received an email from the Georgia Terminal Agency Courteness Association advising the GBI will be terminating our portal XL. This is all tech and all information. We have to have technology. We have to have computer links. We have to have to run our tag numbers, run any kind of criminal history information. And so it is real critical to our operation. The email advised the GBI will be switching to their, a different system. I'm not going to go with all these acronyms. A different system. However, the email advised they do not have a go-live date. In April 2024, the Griffin Police Department system went down. Upon contacting several other agencies, including the Spalding County E-911, Ms. Davis found out that their system was also down. At this time, Ms. Davis contacted the GBI who operates the GCIC system. The representative defined that the GCIC was down, the portal was down, that it went offline two days prior to their system being reconnected, the new system. After gaining, Ms. Davis went to the website and downloaded the information to gain access. After gaining access, Ms. Davis sent out an email to the Griffin Police Department and several other agencies, including Griffin, Spalding County, E-911, and the municipal court, with instructions to register an account and gain access. Ms. Davis took the time to make sure everyone's questions were answered at the police department, which required her to do a lot of additional training and a lot of phone calls back and forth to the GBI and their tech people. The E-911 center kept calling Ms. Davis about issues that were, that they were having with their system. Ms. Davis never complained and was always happy to assist with any questions. The system is now up and running with very few questions due to Ms. Davis's taking the initiative to find the answers to ensure a smooth transition. This is one of the few things that we do in partnership with a number of other agencies to make sure we're all working together in a community for a real similar purpose. And we appreciate Ms. Davis for taking this initiative, and we applaud her tonight with the award. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Judge. Ms. Davis, how long you been with the City of Griffin?
Seven and a half years.
And the word that you just have to emphasize, because I love this, is that you took the initiative to make things better. You commit to making our team. God bless.
Thank you. It's a much thing to say with you, but I love coming to work every day. So when I go to work, there's people behind me. It's a great thing.
Thank you. And they're going to get your picture?
Thank you.
In which division is that?
Okay.
What's he what?
Yes. Thank you. This time, we'll review financial reports from 9/2024. Financial Director Severn Manning Gilbert will address. Good evening. Congratulations for closing out one year and starting another one. And time moves on, right? Yes, ma'am. So we're going to look at May 2024, which is 92% into the fiscal year. Our total operating revenue is $124 million, which is 91.6% of our projections. Operating expenses were $112 million, which is 67% of our projections. Local option sales tax collected was $5,175,379, which is 97.6% of our projections. In teeth loss, we have collected $4,201,765, which is a little over our projections at 112%. Current year profit taxes collected is also at 100% at $5,223,160. Thank you, Severn. Are there any questions? Some more? Thank you for your hard work. Moving into citizens' comments. At this time, the mayor opens the floor to comment for the audience. Comments should relate to specific agenda items outlined on the agenda for a public hearing or concern within the jurisdiction of the city. The commission meetings serve the purpose of conducting city business and are not a forum for his unlimited expression of opinion. Subject to the citizen comment policy adopted on February 13, 2024, and posted for public view, all speakers shall be limited to three minutes, which will be strictly followed and enforced. The mayor reserves the right. Limited comments matters to maintenance of city business, and may refer speakers to the city manager or other staff for resolution. With that being said, is there anybody on my left side, right before the board? Anyone on my left side? Good evening. Welcome.
How are you doing?
Fine. If you could please state your name and address for the record, sir.
Thank you. My name is Bo Day Spott, and I come before you today to just make the community aware of upcoming community service events that we're actually wearing your address for.
Thank you.
Go ahead. And I am actually the Marketing Director and CEO of Patriot K9, one of your local premier dog training facilities here in Griffin, Georgia. We just formally wanted to invite the community out to an upcoming Law Enforcement K9 Appreciation Day that we're hosting here. Ultimately, what we would like to do is actually bring more, just unity between law enforcement and the local community by just shining some light on K9 divisions all throughout Georgia. We've actually invited several different departments to come out for this event. It's actually going to be on July 28, which is a Sunday from 10:00 to 2:00 p.m. We'd love to have you guys all come out. It's actually free. There will be K9 competitions. We'll have charity events that we're doing as well. We're also raising money from different things that we'll be doing to actually give to shelters for women of domestic abuse and sex abuse. That's a free event for the entire family. A lot of fun, food, games. Hope to see you guys out there.
Once again, that day is July 28, which is a Sunday from 10:00 to 2:00. Now, Amanda, would you like to add anything to that?
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Do you have a flyer that you could drop off to the city staff?
I would love to, and I'll bring some. I'll leave some in the back as well.
That is great. Which event is going to take place?
It's going to be on Sunday, July 28 from 10:00.
Where?
The address is?
Okay, okay.
And I'll make sure to follow up with the flyer and more information as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time today. In the citizens' comments, is there anybody on my left side, right before the board? Moving to the right side, the city commissioner makes his statement before this time. Yes, Ms. Marston? Okay, you're fine. Yes, ma'am. Name and address, David.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Tina Marie Marston, Kentucky Avenue, Griffin, Georgia. In 2019, I contacted Griffin Tower about the yard waste charges on my monthly bill. I was told everyone in Griffin has to pay yard waste fees for the collection of leaves, yard clipping, small branches, and other yard debris. I told the representative that I live in an apartment. I don't have yard waste. I was asked how many units were in my building. I told them five. I was told that more than four units were not supposed to pay yard waste. At that time, I shared this with, this information with the neighbors in my building. The yard waste fee was removed from our monthly bill, and a credit was issued for our account. I did tell the representative that my landlord owned three buildings on Kentucky Avenue as part of his. I was told they were checking. My 20-year-old son moved into his first apartment on Kentucky Avenue on April 2023. Recently, I saw his utility bill and realized he was being charged for yard waste. I then reached out to other neighbors. They all confirmed they're being charged for yard waste. However, the yard waste collection track doesn't even come down already on Kentucky Avenue. Two of those neighbors called Griffin Sanitation Department and was told everyone has to pay for yard waste. So I called the sanitation department on July 27, 2024, and was told the same thing. I explained to the representative that I was previously told more than four units still had to pay. The representative took my information, said I'm supervising with common tax. It's been 12 days. Nobody's called me that. Through previous open records requests, I received Griffin Tower interoffice emails pertaining to yard waste fees. These emails are dated July 11 and July 12 of 2019. A central services office manager stated in these emails, per the rule, four more units should not be charged for yard waste. A credit will be approved dating back to January 2019, or when services were started. While the representative asked if additional research needs to be done, a response was given to hold off on Kentucky Avenue. Unbeknownst to me, at that point, my neighbors in the other buildings on Kentucky Avenue, also owned by my landlord, were continuing to steal for yard waste. I had the opportunity to speak with other residents and multifamily units with four more units not going Kentucky Avenue. They are also being charged for yard waste. As a result, I will be submitting a petition signed by those individuals via overcharge. The petition is to have the yard waste fee for eligible accounts put in dispute while an audit confirms Griffin Tower's current rules for yard waste of multifamily buildings and a refund and or credit of all overcharges since the city was previously made aware of this error. I'll be emailing these concerns and a formal complaint on behalf of my son, attaching the precedent, the petition, and those interoffice emails from July 2019.
Thank you for bringing this up.
You're welcome.
Is there a bill from my right side, right before the board? Anybody else? Okay. Thank you all for your concerns. Moving into public hearing. Public hearings are conducted to allow public comment on specific advertisements such as rezoning, ordinances, policy development, operating budgets, and other legislative actions to be considered by the city commission. If you have not had a chance to sign up for or against, we have a sign-up sheet over here for public hearing. For public hearings like zoning, including evidence through the Unified Development Code or quasi-jurisdiction decisions as defined in Article 4 of UDC, all persons who wish to address the board of commissioners during the public hearing must sign up to give a sign-in sheet providing their names, address, whether they are for or against or opposed zoning or quasi-judicial decision. At this time, the board of commissioners will conduct a public hearing for agenda item number five and has noted in the agenda as follows. Received comments regarding a request for variance from the minimum lot size, minimum street frontage, minimum lot width, and minimum setback requirements for property located at 304 North Hill Street. Director of Planning and Development, Shell Haines, will address. North Hill or North Fort? I'm sorry, North Fort. 304 North Fort Street. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The site plan that you have listed is the same one and size of the tax report. We've printed it a little bit for those who use your forgotten names. The applicant, Joseph Hodges, is requesting a variance from Article 708, which states the physical requirements for the creation of a new parcel and the standards and placement of a new residence flowing within the medium residential zoning district. This lot is unique as it originally held three single-family homes on the one lot. As a result of tornado damage, the removal of two structures was necessary. Right now, the property is legally conforming as only one structure remains on the lot. But per Article 505, a non-conforming structure that is destroyed by an act of God may be rebuilt as a matter of right because it was not the intent of the owner to demolish that structure. While the applicant could rebuild these structures as a matter of right, Mr. Hodges wants to remove the legal nonconformity of the three houses on a single-family lot and replace each house on its own parcel. The creation of the three lots requires a variance since the new parcels will not be conforming due to the minimum lot size, the street frontage, and the lot width requirement. However, the new proposed lots will be consistent with the other lots in that area. The street addresses associated with this parcel are 304 North Fort Street, 405 West Chapel Street, and 407 West Chapel Street. Staff recommends approval for the variance request 24-BR-01 from the minimum lot size, minimum street frontage, minimum lot width, and minimum setback requirement for the property located at 304 North Fort Street.
I need to read one more section on this. In the copy of the adopted standards governing the exercise applicable to the aforementioned applications, factors for consideration, the procedures governing the hearing are available to the public. Speakers are responsible for established no record to the presentation of facts before documents of evidence for consideration by the board for review on appeal at this time. Thank you, Ms. Haines, for your input. And at this time, we will, at this time, we will call persons who have signed up to speak in favor of the application, getting with the applicant. Those in favor of the application will be collectively have 10 minutes to speak. If the applicant is familiar, utilize all 10 minutes or to reserve time for rebuttal. In the remaining time, we'll be divided in whether you want to do a sign-up to speak in favor of the application. So tonight, we have the, with 304 Chapel, Joe Hodges, with 309 North 13th Street, to speak for. Mr. Hodges?
Mayor, before y'all go any further, just for a point of clarification, the other two lots at East Chapel, 405 East, 407 East Chapel?
Okay. Welcome, Mr. Hodges. Good evening, sir.
I really don't have anything to add. I have questions for you. I do have the plans with me. Do you want to do the house stuff for the person who is with us?
Not quite.
So, oh, yes, perfect.
You have the square footage on the floor, David?
The rear bedroom, Eden is 1,300. Rear bedroom is 1,700. I'm trying to pick plans that were more special assistance here.
And two of them will be facing Chapel Street?
Yes.
And one will be facing Ford Street?
So there's already one on Ford Street. 304 North Fort still has an existing house there, but it's kind of in the very, very back corner of the street a little bit, so from the corner. So we put those two facing each other.
Okay, so the two will be facing Chapel?
The other one's on Ford Street.
Okay. And what, what is the, um, um, lot size? What, what size is this lot?
Uh, I think it is, if I remember correctly.
It's on the site plan?
Yeah, I think it's like 55.
0.16 acres, 0.12 and 0.12.
Okay, so put, I think it's, it's, we'll be, we'll set that on all sides.
As far as the area?
Right, so each one of them is going to be a little different size. And I did a survey of the surrounding lots that, but this area or across the street, and the average lot size was 0.13. So these fall right in that area. So for the 304 North Fort, that's going to be 0.16. And it needs a variance for the front setback on Ford Street path, because it's existing, but with the, we're missing a lot of these in there. The side setback, rear setback, and then lot size for that particular access. Everything else is good.
Okay, so the front setback?
Yes, ma'am.
And what, what, what is the variance? What's the difference? And what, what should be there? And what we're asking for?
So normally, the front setback is 35. This house is 30. So, and I don't, I apologize. I don't know how far this was from.
So the front setback of the house that each, um, requested to be on will be at the same setback as the existing house?
No, each one of them is going to be a little.
But the one on, on North Fort is same.
It is there. That one is there.
Okay, which one is this? Um, on Fort. So the, the new house will be moving on the same setback?
So the house in the middle at 405, that setback is, he's requesting is 29. So six sorts of the 35, which is required. And then the one on lot 407, he's requesting 26 on that. And the reason is because the lot's smaller. So he wants to make the house large enough for it to be able to have three houses to that.
Okay, on, on Chapel. Okay. And if that walks on Chapel Street? On the area of Chapel Street or their, their sidewalk? Yes. Okay, so the setback will actually start behind the sidewalk. Okay.
So. And the houses that were there before that were damaged, they were much closer to us.
That's what I was asking.
Yeah, so these are going to be quite a ways back from where it was potentially put in downtown.
Okay, so when you divided, when you divided the lot, each one of these houses will be able to meet, what is the 10, 10, the front setback?
They do need to sign. Okay, except for the one, this already is.
Uh huh. Okay.
Any other questions, board? Anything else, sir? Thank you very much. All right, we have no opponent on signed up. So just continue with your counsel. Four questions, conclusion, comments, and suggestions by the board. If any will be reserved and still, the item is called for consideration. However, if any board members have any questions, staff, the applicant for the speaker. We're all going to go there. Okay, let's conclude public hearing agenda, item number three. Moving into the consent agenda, we have items four through eight. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Commissioner Wright with a motion.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ward with a second. All in favor of the consent agenda, please signal by raising your hand. Five, zero. Moving ahead to regular agenda. Item nine is considered a request for variance for the minimum lot size, minimum street frontage, minimum lot width, and minimum setback requirement for property located at 304 North Fort Street. We have a motion on that. The motion to approve by Commissioner Tinsley, second by Commissioner Wright. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
My question?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Some of the stuff that I've been hearing, uh, the, some of the neighbors in the neighborhood are concerned about the, what's the, like, the price of, what would be the price range for these houses? Okay, are they being built to sell, or would they be rental houses?
Sold.
To be sold? Okay. So that's, okay, that'll be three houses. How many other new houses are in that peripheral, close area?
Well, behind there is where Griffin Modern LLC came and talked with us one time about 404 East Philly. They asked for the variance on the roof pit, which was denied. And so I, um, I don't know that anything has really happened.
They're, 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 they're doing something.
They're doing something.
Yeah.
Yeah, they have something. But they haven't done anything yet. So, um, there's a couple more. It's Philly as well, size comparable.
And those are a little bit bigger. And I am more than happy to write all that information down. I've seen it stolen. I mean, also, no exact for the sizes. Um, the other ones that's sticking out on Philly are a little bit larger than the sizes that are going to be here. Um, and I did look at some of the, the houses that are in that area, and they are going to run, they are smaller than the 1500s. So they wouldn't even need the requirements if it, if they were to be built today.
No, the other ones on?
The, the, like, the houses that are currently there, they're, are going to be about the size that you feel.
One other question, I don't know whether this is my business or not. If, if you build a house and you're not able to sell them, um, to a first-time home buyer, which, what you, which you sell them to someone else so that they will have rental property, which I don't have a problem with that, but I just want to know.
Uh, is, is there anything other than that? You prefer not to be asked. You have a little problem. Maybe you make, you can make that up. For that.
Okay, all right.
Any other questions? So we have a motion by Commissioner Tinsley, second by Commissioner Wright for approval. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Five, zero. Moving down to ten, is considered contract with Levex Co., lowest cost amount of $62,435 for adding. for adding an additional bathroom, public works, streets, building. Pleasure to the Board. A motion to approve by Commissioner Tinsley, second by Commissioner Wright. All in favor, please signal by raising hand. Five zero approval. Item eleven is consider agreement for George Department of Transportation to receive funds in the amount of forty-four thousand, forty-five dollars for the roadside enhancement, beautification council grant, debuting by and improve landscape area, US nineteen forty-one, except state route sixteen. So move, a motion approved by Commissioner Tinsley, second by Commissioner Ward. All in favor, please signal by raising hand. Five zero. Item twelve is consider a task order formed to the master service agreement on City Griffin and Aragon Consulting Group in the amount of nine thousand, seven hundred dollars for civil construction documents. E.D.O. encroachment permit, the administration specifications and construction administration for the two thousand, twenty-three roadside enhancement, beautification council grant project, and US nineteen forty-one, state route sixteen. So move, Commissioner Tinsley with a motion to approve. Second by Commissioner Ward. All in favor, please signal by raising, five zero approval. Item thirteen is consider resolution modifying purchase repair of the landfill shredder cutting table by Ganses Brothers in the amount of forty thousand, one hundred and fourteen dollars and sixty-five cents, and amend the price accordingly.
That's it, though.
This is Ward with a motion to approve. Okay, second by Commissioner Wright. All in favor, please signal by raising hand. Five zero approval, and Commissioner Tinsley would like to ask any questions.
That shredder, didn't we just buy one or leave one?
We bought one, and then it caught on fire, and then we bought another one with intense space efficiency. And this is sort of known, it's the teeth that have to be up here because they used to shred too much. So it's, it's not really something that was unexpected, but the cutting symbol is, is what they had to appear. There's a big difference in quotes because each of those, we bought it from, and it comes somewhat under our maintenance and repairs unit with them. Other companies did not, and they wanted to change for it and rebuild, put it back, and that's what was, what, and what we needed.
Thank you. Thank you. Item fourteen, consider the purchase of a new American Auto tie sailor from waste, it's sort of, uh, three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars for the Griffin Regional Recycling Center. First step up. This is Ward with a motion to approve. Second, second by Commissioner Wright. All in favor, please signal by raising hand. Five zero. Item fifteen is consider the purchase of water treatment chemicals from ten vendors. Unified Solutions, Room Tag, Peter Chem LLC, M Trade Chemicals, E.S.D.X International Gas Side, Deserel Chemicals, Sterling Water Technologies, Shannon Chemicals, Specialty Chemicals, total amount of seven hundred and ninety-four thousand, one hundred and ninety-six dollars and forty cents.
That's it, though.
Commissioner Ward with a motion to approve. Second by Commissioner Wright. All in favor, please signal by raising hand. Five zero approval. Item sixteen is consider ratification of the purchase order. Partaking in repair services of large water meters, the Reeves and Chows Media Solution LLC, single source, in the amount of twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five dollars. First step up. Commissioner Ward with a motion to approve. Second by Commissioner Wright. All in favor, please signal by raising hand. Five zero approval. Item seventeen is consider author reading in accordance, pending code of justice six seventy-eight, six K. Regulations pertaining to all parade events for purposes of adopting official trade route in downtown Griffin. Commissioner Tinsley with a motion to approve. Second by Commissioner Wright. Any questions, sir? All in favor, please signal by raising hand. Uh, zero approval. Item sixteen is consider resolution adopting City Griffin policy for signing honorary state. Thank you. Consider resolution adopting City Griffin policy for signing honoring state national championships, assistance, quality, county school system, athletes, and sports teams. Commissioner Ward with a motion to approve. Second, second by Commissioner Wright. All in favor of the motion, signal by, uh, uh, your approval. Item nineteen is consider a claim by Geraldine Glanton for property damage, personal property based on C. Lydon notice from strong law firm, T.C., Davis May Fourth, twenty twenty-four. Staff recommends denial.
That's it, ma'am.
This Ward with a motion to deny. Second, second by Commissioner Wright. All in favor of the denial, signal by raising hand. Five zero for denial. Item twenty is consider a claim by Derek Worzek for personal injury based on C. Lydon notice from FAM Saint Law LLC, dated two four twenty twenty-four, for settlement demand in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Staff recommends denial.
That's it, ma'am.
This Ward with a motion to deny. Second, second by Commissioner Wright. All in favor of, of the denial, signal by raising hand. Five zero for denial. Item twenty-one is consider a resolution authorizing execution of a new governmental contact between the city and the urban redevelopment agency of the city to secure payments to the agency revenue bonds for the One Griffin Center project series twenty twenty-four A in the aggregate principal amount of three million, six hundred and five thousand dollars, and the agency taxable as the bond series twenty twenty-four B in the aggregate principal amount of seven hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars for the purpose of providing funds for structural improvements and repairs to the One Griffin Center and the basic part, public parking debt, and authorize execution of bond terms, stream, and the related set bonds and for any other purposes.
First step up.
Commissioner Ward with a motion to approve. Second, second by Commissioner Wright. Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signal by raising hand. Five zero approval. And consider an appointment, consider the appointment of three positions to the new reform of the farm security area regional airport authority officials. Recommended by position is, like, the, um, yeah, post number two, Jessica O'Connor, city manager, our deputy. Post number eight, Tommy Barrett. Post number ten, Tim Brown. And post number eleven, Randy Peters. I'd like to nominate those on that, that position.
Boyce.
Jessica O'Connor, city manager, our current appointment, Tommy Barrett, Boyce King, Sam Brown, Justin, Randall Peters, Justin.
And Mayor, just for a point of clarification again, the, the actual enabling legislation requires that those that are currently appointed in those three positions, citizen positions, have to be reappointed to either regional authority. The question is, math system, whether it's myself or it doesn't mean at this point, I think it would be appropriate. Another staff recommendation.
So we, we need nominate this like we do a normal nomination? So I'd like to make a nomination for those four proposed. Do we have a, do we have a motion to close nomination? The motion by Commissioner Tinsley, close nomination. Do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Wright. By acclamation, everyone approve of those. Okay, and, um, number twenty-three, consider authorizing travel for Mayor Holbert, District Board, Lori Wright, Tinsley to the court, the annual meeting Amelia Island, Florida, for July twenty-ninth, thirty twenty twenty-four. First step up, Commissioner Ward with approval. Second, second by Commissioner Wright. All in favor, please signal by raising hand. Five zero. That's our agenda for tonight. The manager report.
Right. Couple things to do all right. Um, first of all, just officially want to congratulate Ms. Haines on her promotion to, uh, planning development director, removing the season title for that, and that is well deserved, and she worked her way through it tonight, which is still. And also, congratulations to Miss Davis, she worked very hard as our credit A team, and her at the municipal realize that clear is quite the undertaking, but we also have to be certified by the state, which ironically is tomorrow. And I'll be at the police department for a little bit tomorrow to make sure that we receive our state certification as well. And then Miss Davis and all of that work to make sure that that will be fine. And the other thing that is not on the agenda, but I need to come from you all, is that the county has requested to provide a strategic development planning committee around the new regional airport. As we all know, that will be next due to the city, and so it is very important that we participate in that. But they would like to hear from you all that you are willing to have an ad hoc committee to develop a draft strategic plan, um, including infrastructure development, zoning, and land use, business and employment, transportation connectivity, uh, community engagement, amenities, environmental sustainability, tourism and promotion, safety and security, and then long-term planning, planning and flexibility. They do have a couple, initial thoughts on things to be included in that, which is also the development authority, the Chamber of Commerce, a current airport authority member, um, Ms. Haines, as planning development director, consulting county community development director, a member of, uh, the supporting area transportation committee, public works director for the city and the county, and then myself and Dr. Letter. So if y'all are in agreement with that, I will let them know that we are signed to proceed.
Are they good?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
About the Chamber of Commerce. Is the Chamber of Commerce considered a, like, a public government entity?
No, it's a, it's a one, two, three nonprofit.
So every, every, everybody else is on the list, right?
Yes, ma'am.
So while, 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 while.
Probably they are just connections with businesses, local and, and potential local.
Um, okay. I don't, I don't trust you that much, but I'm ready.
But for the most part, everybody agrees, got us in the back.
Okay.
I'll always want to them and let them know. And also, just a reminder of us, events coming up on Thursday, I'll be out of the office, and I'm going to be team leader for Field Day, um, for the Griffin Golding First Annual Field Day at Tyus Park. So any elementary age children and their parents, um, or family are required to stay, but we would like them to all come. There'll be some water activities, and there's been a lot of hard work put into this, so I'm excited to lead the team, and I know people do, so I'm going to talk about that soon. And, and then last, the second Saturday, it's this Saturday, July thirteenth, All American Car Show, a Marcus Union Concert. So come out, stay on, stay on, there's a lot of fun stuff going on. That's it.
And then the concert, right? Well, well, sir. Mr. Whalen, would you like to introduce your guests?
Very pleasedly, I want to introduce you to your bond, Stephen Swindert from Gray Fennell in Woodford, and you know Bill Tamp, Raymond James and Associates. Worked with us, bond done to write off the occasion. And they have with them tonight, a new, uh, a deep of interns, Raymond James. So I want y'all to stand up at this moment, be recognized. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whalen, for your hard work. Mr. Tinsley, another man, Mr. McCorn.
I want to invite the public to attend the next party in the park at Raymond Hill Park on Thursday, eighteen, from five o'clock to seven o'clock P.M. The event will be hosted by Griffin Fire and Rescue and Griffin Police Department to kick off the rehabilitation of the new community outreach precinct of the Griffin Police Department at six thirty An Street. The city is looking forward partnering with the community to institute the S.A.F.E. State Neighborhood Grant received from the U.S. District Attorney's Office and creating lasting relationships between the public facing and the community. All right.
Thank you, sir. It's a lot. Another man. All the I'd like to say is thank your staff, brought the milestones by getting to the attorney, everything I've ever get here. New year's kicked off, and we're well prepared. Want to thank you all for your hard work, and make them truly great. Live, learn, play, and hopefully retire. Do the motion, Mr. Whalen.
I'll move.
Motion by the Board, I, second by Commissioner Tinsley. All in favor, please leave.